Alrighty, I would like to adjourn the Board of Education closed session at 7 o'clock and reconvene the Board of Education open session at 7:01. And we will be having Mayflower lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Face the, sorry, face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the board, and good evening, Dr. Trosian. Mayflower is really excited to have the opportunity tonight to share with you about a new program and project that we have on campus. In August, we constructed and opened a brand-new teaching and learning garden with the gracious support of our PTA and working with a nonprofit organization called Enrich LA. We installed a raised-bed garden that includes a drip irrigation system and an outdoor classroom. Our classes will be cycling through the garden during this school year, learning about various related topics that also align to the next-generation science standards. This program offers weekly class sessions that are led by a garden ranger, and she utilizes a very hands-on approach to sharing and teaching the interdisciplinary curriculum. So tonight, I have with me three of our 5th grade students who would like to share with you a little bit more about what they've been doing in our garden.
Good evening, board members. My name's Alexis, and I'm a 5th grade student at Mayflower. I'm so excited about our new gardens at school. My classmates and I already have four lessons in the garden that they have been so educational and fun. We get to learn about new things that we're learning about in class, but we get to do it outside. We're learning about scene composers, and producers, and consumers through fun activity with the garden ranger, Ms. V. We are also learning about the weather conservations and the role of the food chain, including the interactions of the biosphere, lithosphere, and the hydrosphere.
Hello, my name is Michaela, and I am a 5th grade Renaissance student at Mayflower. Our new garden is awesome. Like Alexis said, it is so fun. We're not just looking at a screen or a paper. We get to interact, um, sorry. We get to learn outside and interact with our lessons. Currently, we are growing carrots, olivera, kale, stevia, marigolds, and marigolds. Our ranger helped us work together to dig holes, plant seeds, and small plants. We learned that stevia is a different kind of sugar that is healthier for our body. This was very fun. We got our hands dirty, worked together with a partner, and it was just really cool.
Greetings, my name is Ronan, and I'm a 5th grade Peace Patrol student at Mayflower. Our new garden program at Mayflower is inspiring and exciting. We have learned that gardening is easy to do and fun. It is something we can even do at home. We are looking forward to watching the garden grow and having a chance to harvest fruits and vegetables on our own. Already, the ranger shared with us some celery, squash, and kale grown from another garden. She did a cooking demonstration for us, and we all got to taste the food. It was tasty. We are so excited for the students and other grades to experience this, too.
So again, we thank you for letting us share with you a little bit about this tonight, and we invite all of you to come on up and see our garden. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your favorite thing in the garden? You like the eating part? How are you? What's your favorite? Eating? What's your favorite thing to eat? What's your favorite thing to eat?
Um, yeah, I think the garden was the kale. That's the carrots, the potatoes, and the onions.
Ooh, that sounds so delicious.
Good job. Good job. Good job.
You know, before you return to your seats, you were talking about lithospheres and biospheres. Can one of you explain that?
How would you like me to define these?
However you like. Speak slowly and loudly, so that I really do understand.
Okay. A lithosphere is the crust and land around the Earth. A hydrosphere is the water and liquids that are surrounding the Earth.
Thank you.
And the biosphere is the life and bacteria on the Earth.
It was impressive.
So, Dr. Trosian, did that help you?
Yes, it did, and I took notes, Mr. Wong. I'll share them with you later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayflower.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Goes to show you, we never stop learning here.
Never. Alrighty, on to a roll call. At this point in time, Mr. Gillen, Mr. Hammond, and Mr. Pavukian are all excused, but all other board members and staff members are present. And today, at the closed session held at this date, we had no items that we took action on. Order of business, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting of September the 25th?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0.
Great. Recognitions and communications, the Board of Education and the Chamber of Commerce would like to congratulate the following employees on being the recipients of the Monrovia Unified School District's Employee of the Month for the month of October. Mr. Furtig, I'm assuming?
Good evening, Board Clerk Wong, members of the board, Dr. Trosian, and members of Cabinet. It's an honor to be here. I recently was at a meeting in Azusa with about seventeen other adult ed directors, and they were talking to me and about some different things that we were doing at our site and trying to figure out how we did it. And I was telling them about different individuals and some of the efforts they'd made. And finally, this one lady, she's from El Monte, and she did a wask, and she threw her hands, and was, "How do you get these people, Flint?" She goes, "How?" Something's wrong, how do you do it? And I said, "You know, honestly, I don't know. I just do, and it's true. We have landed some amazing people." I'd like to start off by talking a little bit about Maureen Ryan. So, Ms. Ryan, would you come through the crowd there and join me in the front? Maureen came to us just a few years ago, and that position is the quarterback position of our school. If you're, so the coaching staffs on the sidelines, we kind of know what needs to be done, but we really need a quarterback to be out there, calling the plays, being the leader in the field, and really organizing things. And Maureen has grown into an all-pro quarterback for us. And I gave her a football earlier today. She's a big Dallas Cowboys fan. So, we got her that. She's also a big Dodgers fan, so she's not super excited to be here right now besides the award, so we're going to get her out to the car to watch her game very soon. But the truth about Maureen is she has stepped up in so many ways and done so many things. If you could have been at my site this morning, we ran a full Red Cross blood drive. And the fact is, there was not another staff member, including myself, who was even involved hardly in that. We moved a table or two or a chair here and there. Everything else. Now, when you're organizing mountain parks, Canyon Oaks, and thousands of adult ed students and staff to have this blood drive, in addition to all the equipment, all the medical staff, and everything went off absolutely flawlessly. So, Maureen, thank you for being our quarterback. Have a couple of gifts for you, besides the football you got earlier.
Thank you.
And your award. Thank you, Maureen, for all you do for us. Next is Natalie Machia. So Natalie's one of the people that they were talking about when the other director was like, "How do you find these people?" So Natalie has worked in this district with the Continuation School, the Independent Studies School, and the Adult School now. I want to say at least about ten years, Natalie, because it was just a couple of years after I got there that I was blessed to have her. I will say that Natalie did not interview well for the job. And there's a reason why. Natalie cannot stand to say anything nice about herself. She can't do it. She is the most humble person truly in the entire building. And we knew she was awesome. We could just tell. She kind of oozes awesomeness. But she would not say it. She wouldn't. And to this day still, she is, can you see how comfortable she is up here, getting any attention at all? She can't hardly handle. And yet, every time we have these Employee of the Year, to be honest, she could win every year. Because just about everybody in our building loves Natalie and would vote for her. More important than the other staff and people that work for her, I can tell you that there are kids in college today, there are kids who are safe and healthy today, more importantly, and hundreds of them, and maybe even thousands of adults, who have gone through our system, who are better off because of the time, effort, and attention to detail that this woman puts in every single day. And the truth is, I've told her this before, I'll say, I don't know a better counselor than Natalie Machia, and I've worked with a lot of them. And she is right there as one of the absolute best. She's phenomenal. So I wanted to also thank Natalie. Picture time.
You know, Flint, before we go on really quick, the answer to El Monte of why we always get the great employees is great leadership, just so you know. On to board member reports. Ms. Lockerbie?
Yes. Thank you so much. I just wanted to share some pictures from this past weekend MFA. As you all know, stands for Monrovia Association of Fine Arts. They are an association of fine arts here in Monrovia. And we have a relationship with them. And they had their art walk this past weekend at Station Square. And it was just really nice to see all of the local artists with their local art. And I wanted to show, if you could go back one, Shoshana, please, the butterfly. And then the next slide, those are all done in chalk. And the Elvis picture there, it was the winning artwork. And we actually, MUSD was represented there with, I think, the next slide. That was one of our students from Canyon Oaks. So I promised to work harder next year to get more of our students here to this, because there were still some spaces open, and there is a lot of opportunity for our kids to, for our students to participate and show their talents. So it was very exciting, and I appreciated the afternoon, and it was very successful and lots of different art forms there. So that was my, part of my weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Travanti? Nothing? Thank you. We will move on to student report. Ms. Hernandez?
Hello. Okay, so recently, our football team, we won two home games in a row. We're looking forward to winning not only the Rohondo League Championships, but also CIF, hopefully. Also, we had a volleyball game against Arcadia. We had over three hundred students supporting our Wildcats. ASB attended a leadership conference last week in Pasadena. We got a lot of new ideas that now we can bring back to school and share with the rest of our school. Also, homecoming is next week. Our dance is taking place at the clubhouse at the San Anita Racetrack. And we would like to invite you guys all to the football game next Friday at 7:00 PM. Not only do we look forward to winning, hopefully, but also an amazing halftime performance and show where we're going to be announcing Queen and King. Also, lastly, our robotics team is preparing for their season of competition, and as well with Band and Color Guard are going into their season of performing. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from the superintendent. Ms. Throsian?
Thank you, Board Clerk Wong, members of the board. Just wanted to show our student board member in action on the sidelines at the last home football game. We participated in a competition, a scavenger hunt, to support adult literacy at the library. Thank you to the Team Monrovia. We had a great time, and it really was a great deal of fun to work together and to work with other community members. Thank you to Monrovia Reads for leading that effort, as well as the Read Across Monrovia that we just had on October 3rd in all of our schools. And we had a National Walk to School Day last week, and these are signs from Monroe Elementary School, reminding people, reminding drivers to drive safely and not double park. A reminder that tomorrow evening, we have a workshop against vaping and about the trend in vaping. This is for all community members, students, staff, parents, just to learn a little bit more about it. It begins at 6:00 at the Monrovia High School Performing Arts Center. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. On to public comments. The Board of Education encourages public participation and invites you to share your views on school business. Public comments for items not on the agenda? Ms. Huff? Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Board Clerk Wong, the first request to speak comes from Emily Kraus and Janaya Clowney.
Hello. My name is Emily Kraus.
Hi, I'm Janaya.
We're from the Monrovia High School Drama Department to talk about our new show, We Will Rock You. We Will Rock You is from a future where technology rules and rock and roll is outlawed. Through the medium of Queen music, two heroes attempt to defy their government and save rock and roll. So, please join us on October 25th, 26th, and on November 1st and 2nd in the Performing Arts Center at Monrovia High to have an awesome time and see the show. Thank you, and we also have complimentary tickets for the board members.
So if people watching this at home wanted to know how to best get tickets, what's the best way for them to do it? What is the best way for them to get tickets?
Online. Yes, I'll go back, I'll go back. Okay. Our tickets are now online at WildcatTheater.com. It should say, yeah, it says it on here, WildcatTheater.com. And they are fifteen dollars for adults and ten for students.
And what time is it at?
This is at 7:00. Yes. October 25th, 26th, and November 1st and 2nd.
Thank you. Ms. Huff, do we have any other speakers? Thank you very much.
Yes, Board Clerk Wong, the next request to speak comes from Brian Tyndall.
Brian?
Good evening, my name is Brian Tyndall, I'm from Monrovia. I wanted to say thank you for you guys for listening to all of the solar presentation that we all sat through the other day. I'm to understand that it does not, as it was presented, which is terribly disappointing, but I wanted to thank all of you for actually taking the time and showing the initiative on a project this large. We do need to do something about climate change and about the state of the things. Solar is a huge one, and I applaud you for doing that. I just wanted to present you with a couple of other ones. These all are important. There's a lot of them here. I'll try and go through them quickly, but please do remember them. First off, your agendas, you could print them double-sided. Really super easy thing to do, cuts down half your paper. I don't know if you're interested in possibly replacing the astroturf or the turf on any of the fields with astroturf. It would reduce fertilizer use and water runoff and water waste. Water refill stations, instead of water bottles, or instead of water fountains, are a great way to help reduce the amount of water bottles we're using. You could do carpool parking closer to the school. I remember when I was in high school, it was always who could get closer to the school? So maybe if people are carpooling, they can move a little closer. I don't know if you guys have assigned spots. Rodent side. I don't know if you guys are managing rats, like rat poison, rat traps and stuff like that. Recently in the news, there were two mountain lions that were discovered that were poisoned. They had eight different types of toxins in their body, and what happens is the rats get the toxins, works their way into the owls, the coyotes, so on and so forth, all the way up the chain, and you end up killing a lot of animals that you didn't intend to. So I don't know if you guys have rodent side, but maybe that's something to consider, doing a live trap or something else that might work. I know that you have a landscaping project coming up, which is awesome. It gives you the chance to put in like a pollinator garden. The butterflies that were shown in the chalk thing are monarch butterflies, and they've had a huge population decimation, loss of habitat. So you can do a pollinator garden, butterflies, all that kind of stuff. You can plant native trees. You can do more trees, because I know you guys lost them in front of the high school. And then, of course, just education in the classrooms. The most important thing we can do is what I'm doing right now, which is tell everyone else the little tiny steps that they can do, like printing double-sided. It doesn't take any effort, and so I encourage you to continue educating the students. And I had one question. I know you're not really allowed to respond to me, but I know that you stopped using styrofoam in the schools kind of recently. I was just curious why? Because if it was me, I wanted to be happy for me.
We'll definitely get back to you on where that went. I don't want to speak for anybody.
However, you should always take credit.
Okay. I got the city to stop using it in city buildings about a year ago, and I understand you guys did it about the same time, so.
We would like-
It was somehow coincidental.
I would like to say thank you for coming out and taking an interest in this, and this is one of the big reasons why we have meetings, so we can get public input and find out what's important and what people in the community are looking at, because this is for everybody. You'll be happy to know many of the things on your list, we do. Maybe not consistently, because ours are double-sided, but somehow didn't make it out there, I'm guessing. Many of the things you addressed, we're actively looking at and have had multiple conversations on. You can speak with Ms. Huff, and she can give you a much better breakdown if you're interested on any one of those projects. But we do take it as serious as you are as well, because not only does it leave a better footprint, but in many cases, it is cost-effective. So it's a win-win. Thank you.
Very much for the time.
Thank you.
Board member Wong, just as an aside, Ms. Huff was just sharing with me, the one time she didn't print double-sided because the machine was broken is the one time we're called out.
You're forgiven. Do we have any other speakers, Ms. Huff? I would like to move on to public comments for items on the open session agenda. Do we have any speakers? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any of the items on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any changes or questions on the consent agenda? Could I have a motion?
So moved. I will second.
Ms. Huff?
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. Number one, educational services. This is a two-step part, a public hearing and resolution on sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials. So at this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The Board of Education has requested to hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving information relative to the topic of the adequacy of textbooks funding and availability of textbooks or instructional materials in the district for student use during the year's school year 2019-20. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to the motion to adopt Resolution 1920-03 on sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Dr. Kaiser, would you, oh, I'm sorry.
You need a second? A second.
Dr. Kaiser?
Each year, we are required to make sure that all of our schools have sufficiency of textbooks and then have this hearing and open it up to the board. And I would like to tell you that, yes, indeed, we have checked with our schools, and we do have textbooks in all of our students' hands.
Can I make a comment? I just, since we do have the dual immersion programs, I think it's very critical that we also have books related to those programs. So just to make a note that makes sure that our Mandarin program and our Spanish dual immersion programs are properly serviced as well.
Correct.
No, thank you.
The only other comment I have on this is, and this goes to our last speaker, is I know we're really kind of early in the game as far as having our textbooks electronic. Do we have any kind of timeframe when this might be more of a reality?
We've been looking into the possibility of having our textbooks online. We have a couple of issues right now. We are not one-to-one in all of our- We are not one-to-one in all of our schools yet. So to have our core text online, it would make it difficult for us to certify that every child has access to the text until we do have our technology to a place where we are one-to-one, and we can ensure that we have internet for all of the families as well. So with the adoption, we're going through two pilots right now. We're looking at history, social science, and on the heels of that, we'll be looking at science. Both of the publishers, all the publishers for those texts have a book and an online feature, and they go side by side right now. We are not looking yet to purchase something that would just be online for the reason of having equity and access.
That's great to hear, and for the people wondering, we are getting closer and closer to one-to-one, and we are absolutely working on the infrastructure in all of the schools to make sure that every classroom has the same access to the internet. So that is a large, large undertaking that will take us a little while to do, but we're well underway. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Uh, item number two, memo of understanding between Coatsen Foundation for the Art of Teaching, the Monrovia Unified School District, and the Monrovia Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
I will move. Second.
Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, the Board of Education has requested to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Coatsen Foundation for the Art of Teaching, the Monrovia Unified School District, and Monroe Elementary School from July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The Coatsen Foundation is the foundation that is funded by the Neutrogena Soap Fortune, and Mr. Coatsen, when he was living, he felt that there was no greater gift than the gift he received from his elementary teachers, and he felt that the learning that he received in elementary school was magical. And so he's left a large sum, very large sum of his money, to the training of elementary teachers, taking very good teachers and helping them define their greatness within. And so to that end, each year, they select a few schools, very few, to enter into the Coatsen Agreement whereby one of our teachers is given the opportunity to become a mentor, and they pay the salary of that teacher for two years. And five to seven of the teachers on the staff then are trained in one of three areas that they themselves want to study, so it's a self-selection process, and they apply an interview to become what they call Coatsen Fellows. So there's one mentor, and then five to seven fellows. And the fellows are given funds for their learning. Several of our fellows have gone to New York to learn at the Teachers College at Columbia during the summer months, and that has just been a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our teachers through this foundation. Monroe will be our fourth school to enter the agreement. We've had Brad Oaks, Wild Rose, May, and Monroe, and we've had Plymouth. And currently Plymouth is in their second year. Monroe School is entering their first year.
This is a fantastic opportunity, not only for our teachers, but for the entire school and those staffs within those schools, because this program is designed not only to help one person better themselves, but to help them become better mentors themselves and to spread this throughout the school as a whole. Can you give, uh, the people at home an idea of the amount of money that is involved in this grant? Because I don't know that saying just their salary really gets the idea across of how much money we're bringing into the school district.
It's been in excess of five hundred thousand dollars.
So that's, that's five hundred thousand dollars of additional funds to help our teachers become better teachers. And these are the type of programs that we work on on a regular basis to bring to this district, and Dr. Kaiser has been leading the charge and been doing a phenomenal job. Any other comments?
I, I just wanted to sort of echo what you have just said. Dr. Kaiser was explaining Coatsen to me a little more thoroughly during our event for literacy at the library, and was just beaming when she was explaining it to me and is just so, she is so proud of the teachers that are willing to participate in this, to help the schools. But I know how hard she has worked to develop a relationship with Coatsen, and I just want to personally thank you for the hard work that you have done to bring this opportunity to our district, to our teachers, and to our, eventually to our students.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I know it's important and valuable. Thank you.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Uh, item number three, new course offering for high school students introduction to administrative justice. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Dr. Kaiser?
The Board of Education has requested to approve Introduction to Administration of Justice as a new course offering for high school students in the Early College Program. This course will be offered in the spring semester, and this course will give dual credit, high school credit, as well as college credit to the students that are enrolled in this as part of our two-year Early College Program at Monroe via High School.
Fantastic. Comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Number four, public review of recommended textbook. Dr. Kaiser?
The Board of Education has requested to accept for public review prior to the adoption the following textbook for the early college course just mentioned, Introduction to Administration of Justice, Criminal Justice: A Brief Introduction, thirteenth edition by Pearson, and this again is part of the Early College Program in conjunction with Citrus College.
And if people want to view this textbook?
The textbook will be on display in the front lobby for thirty days.
For thirty days. Any other comments or questions? Could I have a motion, please?
So-
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. So moved. Second.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Uh, I'd like to ask the board if it's okay if we have no comments on the textbook that we put this on consent for the next, for the appropriate meeting afterwards?
This textbook?
Yes. So the textbook's in the lobby. If nobody comments on it, in the next proceeding meeting, it'll be, after the thirty days, it'll be approved.
Agreed.
That way, it doesn't have to come back up for a vote.
Okay.
Number five, business services, project change order for Prop. thirty-nine HVAC replacement project gas line supports. Ms. Wu?
Greetings, Mr. Wong and Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Throsian, Cameron, and a staff member. As you know, that Proposition thirty-nine HVAC replacement at Clifton and Plymouth almost finished, and recently the DSA inspector did the inspection of the project, and the district and our contract are required to add additional pipe support on all gas pipe over wing inches in diameters, and additional pipe collapse. This is a DSA requirement, and the project has not been started, and we are waiting for the board approval, this additional work as a change orders.
Uh, so, so really quick, so the bottom line is, we put all the replacements in, the DSA inspector came in, looked at it, said we needed to make some changes, so we have a change order, and that's what we're voting to approve.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other comments or, Ms. Huff? Or anyway, hold on, I'm sorry. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just for the people that might be watching at home, will you explain who the, very briefly, who the DSA is?
Yeah, DSA is the State, Department of State Architecture. They oversee all the California Public School, the facilities project.
So whenever we do something, they have to approve it?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Item number six, authorization for the district to negotiate and transfer workman's compensation claims prior to July one, two thousand eighteen. Could I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Wu?
Yes. Um, board, when, before we joined the A.S.C.A. starting the eighteen, nineteen school year, we were the, a member of St. Gilbert Valley School, there's a self-insurance for workers' compensation. Unfortunately, that JPA, the old members decide dissolve effective June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. So all our just employee who were injured for the work purpose, the district becomes self-insured for taking care of this workers' comp. So, although we have some reserve from the private JPA because of certain of the injury, there's a possibility the reserve may not necessarily enough to cover all those claims. So we're looking for the sort of party to take over so, so that we will minimize of our risk and reduce potential, increase our cost.
So, what we're doing here is, our initial workman's comp insurance company was a consortium of a number of school districts. They disbanded, but from the point in time in which they disbanded, we had some outstanding claims, and that insurance group as a whole had the funds set aside for those particular claims. When they disbanded, they released those prorated portions out to us to take care of it. But what we want to do at this point in time is give this to a third party, release those, the funds that were given to us, to this other company, to handle these workman comp claims indefinitely.
That's correct.
Uh, so then, so the purpose of this is to eliminate any ongoing risk for us that these claims go on for longer than anticipated, that they're more expensive than we thought, or any other unforeseen circumstances. And the net to us is a zero, meaning that they gave us funds that they anticipated to cover all of the funds, to cover all of the claims, and we are going to release those funds, but then the new company has to take on all those liabilities. So the bottom line is, this is going to get us out from any potential problems going forward. Is that a correct understanding of-
That's correct, and hopefully, the district will have negotiated, even get a better price.
Perfect. Do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Item number seven, Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third to thirty-first. Send a message, stay drug-free.
Thank you, Board Member Wong, members of the board. In recognition of Red Ribbon Week, Monrovia Schools will be engaging in activities to educate our students to remain drug-free. We'd like to thank Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio and Assemblyman Chris Holden's offices, which both provided us with materials, certificates, bookmarks, and posters for distribution to our students. And the resolution is for Monrovia Unified to join the California State Board of Education and Governor Gavin Newsom and other educational agencies throughout the nation to proclaim October twenty-third through thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions?
Uh, yes, I do have some comments. Besides the school district taking on Red Ribbon Week, yeah, saying it three times fast, again, this message is out to parents and guardians, take this as an opportunity as well to have this discussion with your children about, you know, saying no to drugs. That is a strong message that we should be having on a regular basis, but as you drive around town and you see the red ribbons around the school campuses, that's a good reminder for us to, you know, go home that evening and have those talks as well. So just kind of reinforcing what, what the schools are doing during the day. Thanks.
Ms. Huff?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Item eight, board advocacy against vaping. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Dr. Throsian?
Thank you, Board Member Wong, members of the board and community. During our last board meeting, there was a discussion about anti-vaping activities and advocacy, and this brings it to a more formal motion to advocate against vaping or marketing vaping products to school-aged children specifically. And that we have a draft letter that we could perhaps send to our legislators and begin those advocacy efforts to limit or restrict marketing to school-aged children.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I have a question that I didn't bring up, and if, if, if we don't have the answers to that now, I understand, and Ms. Jackson, I'm going to put you on the spot, and I apologize. I remember last year at the meeting, it wasn't a meeting, it was an assembly for incoming sixth graders, you were talking to parents about stores that sold vaping products around Clifton, and you gave me a number, and you said there are, what, there are so many, I can't remember the statistic, do you remember it? Because I remember my jaw dropping.
How many vaping shops? How many smoke shops?
Right. There are three vape shops in between a mile from Clifton, and I'm sure there's a similar statistic for the high schools and for the other schools. I'm wondering if we, in our continuing effort against vaping and against marketing products to minors or to our students, if we can start to consider putting a distance in between the schools and stores that sell vaping products? Is that something that we could?
Actually, we've already been approached by the city council in having a joint meeting, a joint discussion about potential ordinances or just having dialogue about that, but that's definitely city business, but, um, what's the progress on having, yes, definitely, what's the progress on having a joint meeting with them? Have you, no. And I know they're in the middle of having their new city manager come over and report November fifteenth, but we will definitely follow up on that.
Well, we absolutely have periodic meetings with the city, and we could put this on our agenda of topics to cover. Those type of regulations clearly fall on the city, but that doesn't mean we can't support them. There was a fantastic letter that will be forwarded on to some of our representatives. Once we finalize that draft, hopefully, we can have that put up on our district page so we can get this word out as much as possible so people have more facts. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Huff?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Clerk Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Uh, number nine, pending board issues. Dr. Throsian?
Thank you, Board Member Wong, Board Clerk Wong, and members of the board. The pending board issues, the only, there are two new items added to the list. One is that joint meeting, which we really are trying to schedule, and it has been challenging. And the second is the solar panel options. This is something we will continue to investigate. We have been exploring further and gathering some additional information and hope to bring that back for further discussion with the board.
So are there any items that the board would like to add or delete from this list?
Yes, I would like to find out how our grant with Amigos de los Rios for the landscaping for the front of MHS, I would like to get a status report on that because that was submitted August fifth, and they said it would take a few months, so that's about now. and they said it would take a few months, so that's about now. So I'd like to see where we are with that, if we could get an update about that as soon as possible, I'd appreciate it.
Any other items? Hearing none, we'll go to, did you have another?
We're going to new business.
We're working our way down. Onto old business, our next board meeting will be Wednesday, the 23rd, at seven o'clock. New business, we have a number of items. Vaping Educational Workshop on the 10th at the high school, State of the Schools on the 16th. Don't miss that, please. The Great California Shakeout, Red Ribbon Week, People Free Day, which all the sites are closed on the 1st. Do I have any other new business? Any other comments or questions?
Hope to see you all tomorrow night for the vaping outreach and awareness. And even if you have very small children, now is the time to find out, and now is the time to get educated on this topic. And also, October 16th, State of the Schools address, we're pretty excited about it. Hope to see you there.
And with that, I'd like to adjourn the regular board meeting of education, open session, and we'd like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Bernard Kelvin Williams, father of MHS Assistant Principal Felicia Limbrick, who passed away recently. Our thoughts and prayers are with Felicia and her family at this time.